Good morning. Welcome to the Cochise County Board of Supervisors meeting. It's our regular board meeting. It's Tuesday, February the 27th, 2024, and it's 10 o'clock a.m., the time that was noticed and posted for our board meeting. We're in the Board of Supervisors hearing room, Melville Lane in Bisbee, and any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. If you would all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you. You may be seated. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is open to are subject to modification at the meeting, and the board may vote to recess into an executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. We'll begin with the roll call. District one.
Crosby is here.
District two, Supervisor English is present. District three.
Supervisor Judd is here.
We have a complete board this morning. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams, computer, or mobile app, or by phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 567-459-038. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on the agenda. To speak on an agenda item or during the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board prior to the start of the meeting. And I want you to note that effective March the first, all speaker request forms need to be submitted by nine o'clock a.m. on the day of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published, and this means that presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. So we began with the call to the public. I have several. The first one is on Teams. Redford Hyde. Redford Hyde.
Hi, good morning. This is Redford Hyde from Sierra Vista. I have a couple of quick notes, points that I'd like to comment on. The first is, I still haven't gotten a reply to my request for information from our new elections director regarding the status of the election. I'd just like to know if he even answers his emails. The next is Peggy Judd. Peggy, you've just handed over all election integrity efforts away. You've given up everything. Why? Why did you do that? Were you being bribed? Get the question. Were you trying to gain favor from those people who are trying to prosecute you at state level? Why would you do that? You're going to decorum us all right into the destruction of our county and the destruction of our country. Third, you guys have a line item today, agenda regarding declaration of the Red Cross month for March, officially Red Cross month for March. I want to remind everybody about the crisis at the border. We've got people coming from all over South America and who knows where, and they're coming in caravans north. They're coming to the border to illegally cross. There is an organization that you know of that you're about to declare proclamation to award official month status to the Red Cross that is providing material support for all of these people, including money, maps, directions, help, food, and other, and their intent is to bring people illegally into our country. And you're going to proclaim official Red Cross month because of all the great things they do? They're going to try to destroy our country by doing this. You know this is a fact. They're bringing in people. They're bringing in drugs. They're having human trafficking, child sex trafficking. People are disappearing into this country, and these people are providing material support for that? And you want to declare official Red Cross month? You've got to be out of your mind. Somebody needs to stand up and do something about this. Somebody needs to say no. Do not give the Red Cross any kind of support at all. They've already shown us they're not giving us their support. They're supporting illegals trying to cross on our border, and who knows what they're bringing? Drugs? Children for sex slavery? What? Get your minds in the game here. We have to protect our country. Thank you very much.
The next person is Sandy Trull. I believe he's in person.
Hello, Sandy Trull from Sierra Vista. The ESNS election machines were in the news. Apparently, the internet went down and the tabulators would not work. America's Voice reported Saturday that, oh, this is in South Carolina primary on Saturday. Poll workers said that because the internet was not working, they had to take primary ballots and put them in a separate bin. Vote tabulators are not even supposed to be connected to the internet in the first place. So why would a tabulator not be able to accept ballots when the internet is down? Elected officials violating their oath of office must step down. We do not consent to 18 vote centers for the 2024 elections. We must return to 55 precincts with in-person paper ballots for election integrity. Third-party corporations involved in our elections is unconstitutional. We have no oversight in our elections. As soon as everyone is aware of the rigging that goes on, everyone will be screaming for paper ballots with humans counting them, not machines. Freedom is what all Americans have in common. We all want freedom. We are losing this freedom. Also, those wanting mail-in ballots, they are being harvested, and you know it. You don't get a haircut by mail, so you can go out to a precinct to vote. Americans have died to protect our freedom. The idealists just cannot see the corruption and still think our government cares for us. Once your eyes are opened, you will see the corruption everywhere. I can't even wrap my brain around it. There are so many Benedict Arnold selling out America, it is unreal. For how, oh, here's a quote. "For how many years have godless communists been infiltrating our country in a planned effort to overthrow our Constitution and Bill of Rights? To subject our citizens to tyranny? To bring our government under the godless rule of one world government? To continue child sex trafficking and modern-day human slavery? To continue to engage in endless foreign wars for profits to the ruling elite while physically and financially destroying the middle and lower class of our country?" Article four, section four of our Constitution requires our government to protect and defend our borders. If government does not, the Constitution, by virtue of the named part herein, authorizes the free citizens to defend themselves and their state in place of treasonous government. Note, in not defending our borders, government gives aid and comfort to a hostile foreign invasion, and this, under Article three, section three of our Constitution, is properly labeled treason. It does not matter how you relabel these invaders. They are still invaders. And just because the money has run out in Pima and Douglas and Tucson does not mean that we want these invaders here in our country and cities. Board of Supervisors, prevent them from coming here. Do your jobs and protect our citizens. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Good morning. My name is Allison Morris. I'm from Portle, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak today. I also want to thank you for keeping our now 18 vote centers and not opting to resurrect 55 precinct polling places. As we know, 80 to 85% of Cochise County voters vote early, and of those remaining 15 to 20% of voters who vote on Election Day, the overwhelming majority prefer vote centers over precinct polling places. Yet HB 2547 and HCR 2032 aim to do away with vote centers. The County Supervisors Association voted unanimously to oppose these bills, but to learn more about them, I contacted all 14 other Arizona County elections departments, and these were their reactions in their own words. "This proposal to do away with vote centers reduces access for voters. In rural precincts, there may be no public facilities. Vote centers give voters a choice in casting a ballot on Election Day. Polling sites and poll workers have become increasingly difficult to find and secure each election cycle. There are really no disadvantages to vote centers that I have encountered." And another one. "The majority of our voters vote by mail, but one of the top complaints made by in-person voters is arriving at a voting location to find out they are at the wrong site. A vote center model eliminates this issue for voters." Again, voters would often attempt to vote in a precinct because it was close to their job or they assumed it was the correct precinct. Now they can vote wherever and wherever it is convenient for them in the county. Vote centers reduce the number of provisional ballots issued on Election Day. I cannot think of any disadvantages to the voting process. And finally, it makes no sense to eliminate vote centers since voters have the convenience of voting at any location. I really don't understand why making it harder for voters is supposed to be the best thing." Those are all quotes. Well, we know it's not the best thing to do away with vote centers. Vote centers are safe, they're secure, convenient, and economical, and it's what most voters want when they vote on Election Day. Thanks to Supervisor English and Supervisor Judd for voting to keep them, and thanks to the elections department for staffing the vote centers and making sure they run safely, securely, and smoothly. Thank you.
The next person is Yvonne Mayer, and that's in person.
Good morning. I'm Yvonne Mayer from Hereford. First of all, I'd like to offer my condolences to Peggy Judd on the loss of her husband. My prayers are with you and with your family. Okay, here we are again. Today's consent agenda includes training for poll workers at vote centers. We, the people, are still asking how you could approve vote centers after the deadline specified in ARS 16-411A. I understand that you do not speak to constituents at a call to the public, but a significant number of constituents have been asking this question, and there's been no response. Here is a letter I submitted to the district attorney on this matter dated February 10th. Dear Brian, as I'm sure you are aware, Board of Supervisors constituents have been asking about the supervisors' votes on voting locations. I'm asking for clarification on the issue. On September 12th, the Board of Supervisors discussed 17 vote centers. The effect of not approving was to default to the 55 polling places. The vote failed by a margin of two to one. This action was taken within the deadline specified in ARS 16-411A, which clearly states October 1st as the deadline, October 1st of the year preceding the election, which they did. And on December 12th, they did it again. The issue appeared on an amended agenda, and they voted to add an additional vote center, one in Peggy's district. This time, the measure passed two to one with Peggy voting in favor. At the supervisors' meeting on January 2nd, January 9th, a constituent, Nancy Olmstead, advised that the December 12th vote was against ARS 16-411A. I've got that number memorized. This was not acknowledged by the board. And again, on January 23rd, constituents questioned the legality of the action taken in December, namely approving vote centers after the date mandated in the ARS. I realize that people speaking at a call to the public do not engage.
Your time is up.
Okay. I would like to have this entered into the record, the letter to the county attorney.
Your time is up. The next person is Kim Depew in person.
Good morning. I'm Kim Depew from Sierra Vista. Okay, just a review. In September, you voted against the vote centers. In December, after the October 1st deadline, you voted for the vote centers. You clearly violated ARS 16-411A. Yes, I too have it memorized. And got away with it because it's politically expedient and supported by the liberal Arizona Attorney General and liberal Secretary of State. When I use the word liberal, it's a bad word. It means sloppy, loose. Vote centers are too big. Precinct wait times were less even when more people voted on Election Day. I was there, and I remember. It takes much longer to vote at a vote center now. This is apparently what our county administrators want, to coax us into 100% mail-in ballots by making Election Day a misery. This illegal board action got buried in the debris of big government because I've been rendered small in your liberal, big-government view. Which brings me to my final comments and why I bother to speak here at all. We are still a constitutional republic. Our founders knew smaller is better. Government was to be proportionally tiny to the populace and responsible to that populace. Citizens are sovereign. As we grow our government larger with increasing departments and workers and money, it becomes easier for those employees to think they know what is best for the sovereign citizens. This is a mistake. It's lazy, sloppy, liberal governance, and it's killing America, even in little old Cochise County. Well, this time I resorted to show and tell, so I have two pictures of a constitutional republic. This one is our perfect, this one is our perfect union. Private sector is large and healthy. State and federal government is small, small, and equally divided. This one shows what we are now. Citizens eclipsed by the government, and you've done it by violating 411A. Thank you for allowing us to speak.
Next person is Paul Barbel in person. Paul Barbel.
Good morning. I'm Paul Barbel, Sierra Vista. Well, English and Judd, you two violated the law, and we all know that you know you violated the law when you did your dirty deeds after the deadline. You broke the law by changing what we passed to what we did not and did so after the deadline that you never responded to. What you did was not only unethical, it was illegal, and you did it against our wishes. You broke the law with illegal vote centers. You will be held accountable. It's just a matter of time. Haley Judd, you and your cohort in crime are the reason why you and Tom Crosby are being sued by you pleading the fifth that firmly put you in the Democrat arena with Katie Hobbs and Adrian Fontes, who committed election interference and vetoed election integrity, and then tried to force Tom Crosby to certify uncertifiable machines. And if he doesn't, he'll be sued. Well, he wouldn't. He stood firm because he believes in the Constitution. He believes in election integrity. He believes in God and America, and he also believes in preventing invaders from coming across the border into our country, and he doesn't want machines in the voting process. Or illegal vote centers. Unlike you two, Tom is above reproach, and we want him as the chair. Judd betrayed the Republican Party by nominating a Democrat for the chair. And since you work for us, that means you work for me. And as your boss, I say you're fired. Don't go away mad. Just go away. Have a good day.
The next person is Tricia Giradet, and I believe that's on Teams.
Yes. Good morning. This is Tricia Giradet in Sierra Vista. I've been distracted by some of the things that have been said already, but I'll say my speech, and maybe I'll have time to comment. I want to say that I started observing voting at a young age. I was accompanying my mother to a neighbor's garage. Yes, it was the 50s. We voted in people's garages, and people were not hostile to members of another political party. When I came to Arizona in 1995, I joined the lines at my polling center location to be able to vote. It seemed to be a guessing game to me for a few years as to when the lines would be the shortest. And then I learned about mail-in voting. I haven't looked back. Along with approximately 80% of the voting population, that includes a high percentage of Republicans, we all find this handy, comfortable, and secure option for voting the best choice for us. It is secure because not a single court challenge that I'm aware of has proven otherwise. I'm also a resident, a member, a citizen, a member of We the People because I am a resident and a citizen. And there are plenty of us who are also not being represented except by a few voices. So we have equal weight with those who show up like us. We get meeting after meeting to say how angry they are. But I want to say thank you for the mail-in ballot option and for the vote center option. These are all steps that facilitate voting and should be maintained and promoted. The American Red Cross does not facilitate border crossers. They are providing humanitarian assistance to those who have crossed. That's a very upsetting portrayal by a previous speaker. Thank you.
The next person is Alice Novoa, and she's in person.
Good morning. My name is Alice Novoa. I am from Tegu, Arizona, born and raised there. I'm a United States citizen of Mexican ancestry. And to correct everybody, we are not Americans. We're United States citizens. If you go to a rally and illegals are on the other side, they say that they're Americans, and they are right. We are from the United States. There's also Mexico-America and Canada-America. So we are from the United States of America. First, I have here, and I have completed proof, everything I'm about to say is truth. I have fact, I have material evidence. This is an early ballot, official early ballot from 2020. Arizona alone will bring down the Biden administration. Biden is an illegitimate president. The electors from Arizona, three of them, Regina Romero, right here, for Harris and Biden. Mayor from Tucson, Arizona, is an illegal alien. What is it, guy saying, Ruben? No. The one that is a supervisor in Maricopa County, Gallardo. Steve Gallardo is also an illegal alien. I'm going to say alleged, but I know. So I'm going to say alleged, okay? And also, the other one is Areida. Areida is a friend of this guy right here. This guy is our Secretary of State. He got the illegal alien vote from illegal alien Republicans, from independents, and also from illegal alien Democrats. We have over a million illegal alien registered voters in Arizona because they call it open voting, you know, local voting? You know how you allow illegal aliens to go into a place and vote for councilmen, for school board, and that? Well, that's what they're calling it, and they're voting. It's not just in Arizona, it's in all states. We have over 30 illegal alien elected officials in the state of Arizona who have taken the oath. Raquel Teran from Aguaprieta Sonora, Mexico, is an illegal alien. I'm going after her again. Alma Biltosola, Justice of the Peace, Douglas, Arizona, is an illegal alien. All these people I am talking about, I have evidence too, and I will take them all down. And we have over there Becerra, no, wait a minute. The guy who is in the health with Biden, he's an illegal alien. Harris is not a natural-born citizen, so I can give you a story on all the ones that are not natural-born citizens. And so I'm telling you right now, open your eyes. Mr. Crosby and Ms. Judd, I am with you. I don't know these people because they lack some knowledge, but I have evidence where Mace got the illegal alien vote. And you're talking about the attorney for Arizona, the one who came after you. And she also not only got the illegal alien vote, they counted her with 500 by curing the ballot's mission, Arizona.
Your time is up, Ms. Novoa.
I understand. And I will speak after. I'll be shouting it out.
The next thing that we have, we're privileged to have Jonathan Rutherford representing Chiracalla Community Health Centers. He is the comprehensive psychiatric program manager, and he's going to present to us the psychiatric program that they have been developing at the Chiracalla Community Health Centers based on the fact that the board gave them $1 million of our ARPA funds because of the lack of psychiatric services in Cochise County. So, Mr. Rutherford?
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate this opportunity to present to you. Um, yes, my name is Jonathan Rutherford, the comprehensive psychiatric program manager. I am a psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner by trade, and I've been working at Chiracalla for the past two years and grateful for the financial assistance to be able to develop this program and bring this service to Cochise County. Next slide, please. So this and the next slide are just a brief overview of the entire dashboard for review at a later time. If you want to, if you'll notice, this is 2022, and then if you'll go to the next slide, that's 2023. I am going to break it down on the following slides, so we'll go to the next one, please. One of the commitments we made was to track the number of unduplicated patients that we have treated since starting the program. I did start this program initially alone as the only psychiatric prescriber. And so that began in early 2022. So you can see as I tracked by quarter, all those patients were just me seeing them alone. By the end of 2022, I had seen 231 patients. In 2023, we hired, over the course of the year, three additional psychiatric mental health nurse practitioners whom I supervised. So you can see that the number of patients that we have seen through the entirety of 2023 has grown to 748. Our goal was to see a total of 800 over the course of the three years in which we have been granted this money by the county. And at the end of year two, we are already almost there. So I'm really excited about that. Additionally, we had promised a number of appointment slots with a total, a target total of 5,500. I wasn't sure the best way to track that, and I decided these are the slots that we actually filled. So if you look again at the slots over the course of 2022 and then again into 2023, you can see that we are at 3,514 patient appointments held with the four of us by the end of 2023. So we are on track to meet that goal as well. So pretty excited about that. Here I'm tracking medication-assisted treatment services. Now, this is in reference to those who struggle primarily with opioid use disorder. There are two primary medications which we use to treat opioid use disorder. First is buprenorphine. The best-known drug in that category is Suboxone. It is actually an opioid drug, but it is a much safer alternative without getting into the exact nature of it. It's a, it's a very good drug to be able to treat those who struggle with opioids. And this is not the just to my program, although we do treat that. Chiracalla has actually expanded its services for medication-assisted treatment so that all prescribers are expected to be able to do so. To be waived to do so, it does require, or at least in the past, it had required some additional government authority to be able to prescribe buprenorphine. And, and all the prescribers have taken on patients who struggle with opioid use disorder. So I did break down, our target goal was 50, 50 patients treated. We are well beyond that across Chiracalla. By the end of 2023, we have treated 329 patients total. The other drug we use is called Meltrixone. This is not an opioid. It completely blocks opioids, and so it kind of works in a slightly different mechanism. But we tracked the number of patients who have been treated with either of these drugs. And so we are, we are trying to help treat opioid use disorder across the county, and I feel we are doing a great job with that. One thing I do want to point out, my last bullet point at the bottom of this slide here, we're preparing to be able to provide SUBLOCADE. SUBLOCADE is a buprenorphine injection. You get it once a month and provides long-lasting coverage. So instead of taking an oral medication or a medication under the tongue multiple times, So instead of taking an oral medication or a medication under the tongue multiple times a day, you get this injection once a month, and you essentially cannot abuse heroin or fentanyl or other drugs for the course of that month. So pretty excited that we are nearing that point, working closely with pharmacy to achieve that. Next slide, please. We use the Patient Health Questionnaire to track depression. This, again, is not just limited to the psychiatric program. It is across Chiracola. And so we began tracking that in 2022 and comparing the previous years to show improvement. You'll notice that through 2022 and 2023, we kind of were just middling fifty percent to sixty percent approximately in terms of our compliance. Our goal is to screen everybody twelve and older at least once per year. And so we had, we had been only moderately successful. And then in quarter three, I actually double-checked when I was reaching out to the people who helped me gather the data. I was like, is this accurate? Because I do see some significant changes in our compliance. We jumped to seventy-two percent and sixty-nine percent in the final quarters of 2023. So we have improved. I do believe, you know, I haven't necessarily dug into it, but I would at least like to believe that that is an increased acceptance and and passion for treating mental health. I think the culture here at Chiracola continues to gravitate towards more holistic care, not just treating the medical side, but also treating the behavioral health side. Those who have a positive depression screen that actually receive a referral for treatment to either counseling or psychiatry, you'll notice that was, interestingly, about seventy-seven percent through 2022 and again, the first half of 2023, and it actually dropped in 2023 at the end, the final half. I believe there are two reasons for that. I probably put them in the wrong order. We did actually have to halt internal referrals for a time. Our providers were overloaded and just couldn't take on all the referrals we were receiving. And so this is purely internal referrals we were receiving. I'm sure that some of those were going outward to external agencies from our medical providers. But I also believe that there is an increased competence and confidence level on the part of the primary care providers, and that that has contributed. I actually, one of my favorite unforeseen roles here at Chiracola is that a number of the primary care providers will reach out to me. Some of them are, and I don't want to trivialize it, but there are more complex psychiatric conditions or scenarios, and they're less complex. And sometimes those less complex patients can be seen by the primary care providers and receive adequate treatment. And I will often guide them. They will reach out to me, even just during this meeting, I had somebody reach out to me with a question. And I'll say, why don't you try this? Or, you know, this is how I would approach this. And so instead of them getting a referral to me and being monitored by me, primary care can do that. And so I believe that is partly also a reason why the number of referrals has gone down. I think it's really important that we beef up the competence of our primary care providers in treating mental health disorders. Finally, those who retrieve, or I'm sorry, those who receive treatments and show an improvement in their depression using the Patient Health Questionnaire over the course of 12 months. So this is comparing their score the previous year to the current year. If you'll look through 2022, and again, the first half of 2023, again, we were somewhere around forty to forty-four percent, not showing a drastic improvement. And then suddenly, we see this big uptick in improvement. Again, I questioned the results. I reached out to those in informatics who helped track the data and say, was this accurate? Did we make a mistake here? And they said they double-checked that this is accurate. So I do hope and believe that this means that we're starting to see some big results. We've actually had a drastic increase in the number of counselors that we have here at Chiracola. Again, with the number of prescribers, we also are providing more antidepressant medication and other treatment options. And so I do believe that our patients are becoming less depressed overall, and that makes me happy and excited. Okay, next slide, please. This is just a quick picture. This is what the Patient Health Questionnaire looks like. I don't feel it's necessary to go through all the questions, but it is essentially each of these questions goes through the different criteria that we use to diagnose major depressive disorder. And you can kind of gauge, okay, how often is a patient experiencing these symptoms? It isn't a diagnostic tool. I do have to note that. For instance, people who have the flu are going to have less energy. And question number four is, do you feel tired or have less energy? Or, you know, there can be appetite changes. There are medical reasons for this. So again, this is not a diagnostic tool, but it is useful in gauging, okay, how depressed a person is? How closely do their symptoms align with major depressive disorder? And then we can compare this tool, today's results, to previous results to sort of track, are they getting better? Are they getting worse? So if we'll go to the next slide, this one is not even something that was committed to when we did accept the ARPA funds, but I think it's useful to report. We're, we in psychiatry use this tool. It's called the Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale. And it is an evidence-based tool to track how suicidal an individual is. And we have just been using this in behavioral health. We are starting to look at using this more in the primary care setting so that we can identify patients who are suicidal earlier on and get them the treatment they need to hopefully reduce suicides in Cochise County. Next slide, please. Okay, this one's a little bit of a difficult one to track. I actually had to change the way I was looking at it. But we, all the four of us psychiatric prescribers, obviously, are giving medications pretty routinely. And you'll notice quarter one, I'd only, that was just me, quarter one of 2022, I'd only sent out a few medications. And about sixty-seven percent of the patients, or of the medications, rather, were picked up on the first try. And I think the data was probably not. There weren't enough prescriptions sent out for that to necessarily be reflective, but you can see that all across. That's been pretty consistent. It actually has gone down a little bit. And so I sort of changed the way I was looking at the data and realized that, oh, unfortunately, we're not doing as well as I would like. I want our patients to consistently pick up their meds. And so while I find that unfortunate that it's gone down, on the positive side, I think that shows that we can do something to ensure better compliance. Patients who want psychiatric treatment, want to receive medications, but don't pick up their medications, they're not going to get better. They're not going to experience any benefits if they don't just go to the pharmacy and get their meds. So knowing where we are struggling now, having a different look at the data, I believe we can target that a little bit better and hopefully improve the numbers in that regard. Next slide, please. This one has been a very big struggle for me to track because the hope initially was that we would sort of look at this longitudinally. In other words, we would get data on patients the day they arrived and maybe annually, and then after they left, and we would see their quality of life go up over the course of time. Unfortunately, we have patients leave the program sometimes because they feel better. They've been discharged, saying, oh, great, I'm better. I'm going to take my meds and I'm good to go. Some people, they just disappear, and we never see them again for various reasons. It's pretty hard to track this from beginning to end. And so these scores honestly represent more of the overall average that we are seeing from all patients. So we continue to initiate people with, when they come into the program for the first time, we get their score, their baseline score, and try to track them. And so each of these scores represents, okay, in this quarter, the average patient reported that their quality of life was at this level. The score is from zero to 100. 100 would be like perfect health. Zero would be the worst health. And so, interestingly, on average, Cochise County patients, Cochise County individuals seem to have between sixteen, sixty-five percent approximately quality of life. So we are still trying to figure out how we can better track those perhaps who have discharged from the program, those who left because they succeeded, those who left because they weren't happy, seeing if we can get a better gauge across the spectrum of care. At present, we are not able to do that very easily. Next slide, please. This one is also a similar problem. We do this on initiation of services and across their care. And with people leaving at different points and having a difficult time tracking them down at the end, it's hard to see how they did from beginning to end. However, there's a model, which I do have on the next slide. I'll show you momentarily. It's called the trans-theoretical model of change. And essentially, people are at different points of change in their lives. We all, we all tend to think, okay, we need to make changes in our life. And the question is, how ready are we to change? Some people, they were like, you know what? I don't care. Like, I'm going to continue with these habits, even if they're unhealthy. Some people are like, yeah, I'm thinking about it. I'm just not there yet. Some people, okay, I'm ready. I'm about to take these steps. And some people, they are taking steps. They are in that stage of change. And so we call those pre-contemplation, contemplation, preparation, or action stages. We ask the patients to fill out this survey, this tool, and they sort of mark, here's where I feel at the moment. And essentially, we get a score out of that. And that score can be interpreted as, are they in the pre-contemplation stage? I'm not ready to make changes in my life. Are they at the contemplation stage? Okay, I'm thinking about it, just not quite there yet. Or are they in the preparation or action stage where they're really making some changes in their life? And we do see the numbers kind of fluctuate between upper eights and ten over the course of use of this tool. What that has revealed is that every time, the patients on app are in the contemplation stage. I do find that interesting. I'm not sure if this tool was the best choice. You know, it looks really good on paper, but as we're using it, we're, apparently, the report is that some of the patients struggle with answering the questions. And so I'm not sure how meaningful this is, but at least we are seeing patients are wanting to make change. And that is a good, a good thing. They are coming to receive services. Those who show up are at least interested in making some changes and some improvements in their life. So the hope is that we will find better ways to track those who leave services to see if we can get a better feel of how they're doing. But at present, that still does remain a struggle. Next slide, please. Just a quick little diagram of the meaning of that model I described to you, at what stage they are in, and how prepared they are for change. While we like to sometimes think of this as clearly black and white, they're in one stage, then they move on to the next. The fact is, people can fluctuate, even sometimes day to day. There are some days where somebody might say, look, I'm ready to give up smoking. I'm going to do this. And the next day, they're like, ah, forget it. I'm not ready. So it doesn't necessarily go in this true circular fashion. Almost everybody will relapse at some point, no matter how well they're doing. They will fall back to an earlier stage. And the hope is that when we fall back, and this is all of us, you know, we all make commitments every new year, probably to lose weight and other things. But when we relapse, the hope is that we've at least gotten some of those changes in a more permanent habitual state where we are ready. Okay, maybe I didn't make all the changes I committed to, but at least I've kept some of them, and I'm ready to recommit and start moving through the process once again. So it is a useful model in terms of gauging how ready a patient is to make a change in their life. Next slide, please. I guess that was it. So any questions for me?
Yes, it seems as though, Tom, go ahead.
Mr. Rutherford, thank you very much for your presentation today. I have a corrections background, and I'm an associate, associate member with the Marine Corps League at the Warrior Healing Center, and PTSD and suicide are a frequent topic of conversation. So I appreciate your candor today, and I appreciate your candor with the, what I perceive as your measure of success, that you're claiming to be sixty-five percent, or this county is at the sixty-five percent level and so on. So I appreciate the challenge that you have before you. A friend of mine died from a methadone overdose, and he had a back injury, got addicted to pain pills. And so I had to question about buprenorphine or buprenorphine. And so actually, too, does somebody get high by using that? And does it reduce pain or not?
Great questions, both of those. I appreciate you asking those. The first is that, yes, it can be used to get high. It is less usable to get high. So I don't, I don't want to create a fiction that it is not usable for that. But especially in the Suboxone form that I did mention there, the nice thing about it is it's a film, a dissolvable film that one puts under their tongue. And it is combined with another drug called Naloxone. That Naloxone is better known as Narcan. You may know this as the reversal drug. So when somebody has an overdose, you use Narcan to reverse an opioid overdose. In this combination, if somebody were to dissolve this in a liquid and try to inject it into their vein, for instance, the Naloxone would actually reduce or prevent a degree of that ability to get high. And so that's one of the advantages of Suboxone. Under the tongue, it is not absorbed and used in that manner, and so they receive the benefits and not the other. So it is much more difficult to get high. And just by nature of this opioid, again, without trying to get into the full complexities of it, it is just not as usable to get high. It is a lot harder to overdose on it. It just has a number of advantages, and then combined with the Naloxone, once again, harder to get high. The second question, is it useful for pain? Yes, it is. Some people actually receive it purely for pain. And this one is given as the preferred choice because they're less likely to develop that addiction, that dependence upon it. So hopefully, I answered your questions clearly and adequately.
We did. That was very important to me, if it reduces pain or not, because apparently methadone did not reduce my friend's pain, and he took a whole bunch of an antidepressant. So that's why I was wondering about that. So this buprenorphine, it stops craving and it reduces pain. And it gets you, okay?
It can. It certainly can, but it's harder. And I am sorry for your loss.
That's okay. Well, you know, he's in a better place, as they say. So this Meltraxone, I think you said, that stops somebody from getting high?
Absolutely. If you're using that, it is very difficult. I don't want to say absolutely impossible, but it is very difficult to use, to abuse an opioid while using Meltraxone. Unfortunately, the downside is if you're, if you have like an accident, and then the paramedics come to pick you up, and you have Meltraxone in your system, and they try to give you some morphine to ease any pain you're feeling, you won't get the benefits. So that's the downside. But often, when we, when we use this drug, we'll often give people like little cards in their wallet. They have like dog tags available that will say, oh, this patient is receiving Meltraxone treatment. And so what can be done is, and you have to do so very carefully so as not to overdose the patient, but you give higher doses and try to overcome that blockade of the opioid receptors. I know, I feel like I'm getting a little too complex here.
That's all right. Now, this one, SUBLOCADE, you said, if somebody's taken SUBLOCADE, they cannot abuse. So what did you mean by that?
Because like I had said, you can get high off of Suboxone or oral forms of buprenorphine. It's harder, but it is still possible. SUBLOCADE, if somebody were to come into my office right now and I gave them this injection, it would be slowly released into their system over the course of a month. And during that month, they couldn't, they could not pull it out. They couldn't take more of it. They are just getting this pretty sustained dose over the course of the month, blocking other opioids from getting them high, and yet not able to change the amount that they're taking. It's a really neat mechanism that makes both compliance. You know, if they decide, you know what? Forget it. I don't want this anymore. I'm going to abuse. Well, too bad. They can't. They can't. For the course of that month, they just cannot do it. And it's just a really neat drug that way. Did that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Sounds like the best thing going. Now, the last, my last topic is holistic treatment. Tell us about holistic treatment, and my observation of that is people that need it most don't get it. But what do you say about whatever holistic treatment you recommend with all this?
Well, you know, holistic, I guess, can be a very broad term. So you know what? It can mean alternative treatments such as, you know, yoga or massage or various other treatments. I guess, when I at least use the term, I meant, you know, comprehensive in terms of both getting your medical treatment, but also getting behavioral health treatment. I'm a big believer in therapy. What's funny, I often tell my patients, I'm not a really great therapist because my training very much focused on prescribing medications, even though I do provide a degree of therapy, and my patients, you know, hopefully, they appreciate it. They usually tell me they appreciate it. But my focus is often the medications, and so I would like them to see a dedicated therapist who put their focus of their education into therapy. That's really something I believe in. And, you know, the advantages of therapy is it doesn't have the side effects. It doesn't have a lot of the downsides that the medications do. On the other hand, it doesn't help everybody get better. I just believe in really looking at the full human being and looking at what we need to tailor to the individual in order to get them the help that they need. And often, in the past, historically, medical care neglected the mental health side of things. I believe in looking at both aspects and trying to provide the full comprehensive care for a person.
I hope we get to talk again sometime, Mr. Rutherford. That concludes my comments and questions, and I thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
I do have one. Madam Chair, Mr. Rutherford. I was just curious how accessible you are when you have someone that's working with you. I don't think you ever covered that, like how, kind of like we talk about recidivism. Do you have people come back to you when they come, you know, when they get away from the program? Do they often come back to you seeking help? Is it a comfortable thing? Is it a comfortable thing?
I'm glad you asked that question. I I wish I were tracking that and had some data to support that, but I will say that is, that is something that we do have. Um we do have people who disappear. Um I've been maybe fired uh like twice by my patients who said, never mind, I don't want to see you again. And then they they, at least one of them, I I can recall for sure, came back and said, you know what? I needed to hear what you had to say. Uh I I had caused offense by maybe being a little too blunt. But then the individual said, you know what, thank you for being so blunt. I've actually made some changes in my life because of what you said and and came back. I have never ever fired a patient. Um that's contrary to Cheroakaw's policy, um except, you know, in in a ma- in the most extreme of cases where somebody's like threatening to kill or something like that. Sure, yeah, we would probably not let that patient come back. But in general, we will always let somebody come back. And um I've been treating mental health for a while now. I used to work at the hospital. I I know that recidivism is a a huge issue in in the mental health world. And I believe that we must always keep an open door um in order to provide the best care for these people. I want Cochise County residents to get better. And even though relapse, as I showed in that model, is a common, common thing, the hope is that people will continue to achieve a degree of recovery and and make incremental steps toward a better quality of life. And so um, yes, I I am extremely accessible. If somebody wants to come back and see me again, I will always let them come and see me again.
And you did kind of make that point, but that that people tend to to treat, view your treatment as something favorable and would come back in again. If if they were a little bit down the road and needed you again, they feel comfortable coming back to you. And I think I'm I'm concerned about that. Want to make sure you are that kind of person that they would want to come see again if they needed you. So any, you appear to be, you're not here in front of us, but you appear to be, and um, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I, you know, I don't want to toot my horn or anything like that, but I always try to be an approachable and kind person, and I think my patients feel that, so.
Thank you.
Well, I I I for one uh feel very good about the um steps that we took in order to enhance the the medical profession by adding mental health as a a priority for us at the board. And and I think the the public that's listening at least will understand that uh the program is working. Um it, but it's in its infancy, and so we need to keep it moving if we can. So thank you very much, uh Mr. Rutherford, for giving us that presentation today. And um I'm glad that we chose to support you and your organization.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate your time.
If there's nothing else, then we will move on. No more questions? Nope. Okay, thank you.
Did you understand my point of order about the consent agenda? I'll make the consent agenda if I may.
I I didn't.
Okay.
Know what you're
I I want to uh remove item five for separate discussion.
You wish to remove item five from the consent agenda?
That is correct.
Okay, then item five will be removed, and so I would look for a motion on the consent agenda for items one through four and number six.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve consent agendas, I agenda items one through four and six.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it is unanimous and approved. Uh so now we have um item number five that has not uh, so I need to have a motion before discussion.
Madam Chair, I move we appoint poll workers for the twenty twenty-four presidential preference primary general elections and authorize elections direct, the election director to make additions or substitutions as necessary prior to each election to ensure that all vote centers are staffed adequately and trained election poll uh trained adequately with uh trained election poll workers, and I will have a uh
I'll second that.
Secondary motion. That was, that was perfect.
Here we have a motion and a second.
Okay, so my discussion goes like this. Before we vote, I have a secondary motion preceded by these comments. September twelfth, resolution on vote centers failed. The default was was maintaining fifty-five precincts. This met the October first deadline of ARS sixteen four eleven A. December twelfth, issues appeared on the amended agenda. This time, one vote center added in Peggy's district. This was illegal according to ARS sixteen four eleven A, according to uh, well, it it may have been, it was allegedly illegal, let me put it that way. June ninth, the Board of Supervisors was advised that December twelfth vote was illegal. Constituents have repeatedly asked for explanation on these actions with no response. Therefore, here comes my motion. I move the county attorney be tasked with producing a written opinion determining the legality of the board's action regarding the above noted dates and regulation deadlines.
I believe we have a a a motion and a second on the floor for um item number five.
That is correct.
What you should probably say is, uh Crosby, your motion fails for lack of a second.
Well, I'm I'm waiting to see if it failed or not. So you you've made a secondary motion, and I don't hear a second. So that means that we can't move forward with that.
That's fine. I understand that.
But we do have a motion on the floor that does have a second to um for the item number five. So if there's no further discussion on item number five, I will call for the vote. Now. Here are no discussions. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. And now we move to the public hearings. Um first one, um could I have a motion, please, before Lara explains this?
Chair, I move that we approve a new license application for a Class A bingo license submitted by Ms. Amanda Salis, Mescal Bar and Grill Two LLC located at seventy North Cheroakaw Trail, Benson, Arizona, eight five six oh two.
We'll do that with Cherokee Trail in a second.
Cherokee Trail, sorry.
All right, we have a motion in a second. So Ms. Lindstein?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is for a new Class A bingo license submitted for Mescal Farm Grill Two located at seventy North Cherokee Trail in Benson, Arizona, eight five six oh two. The application's been reviewed and recommended for approval by the appropriate departments. Property taxes for the parcel are current. The application has paid the five dollar processing fee, and board staff is recommending approval.
Okay, it is a public hearing, so I will move us into a public hearing. I have had no I remember seven, no. Um before we get out of the public hearing, I will have to say I don't think I've been asleep at the wheel, but I have, don't believe I've ever seen a bingo license come to us before. Is this the first?
I would say that it is because it is not a charity. It appears like it's it's a
A bar.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this this one, I had to read it more than once. I'm going, bingo? Ah, you have to, like, okay. Uh so we'll move out of the public hearing, and we do have a motion and a second. So i- if there's no further discussion, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. And we move on to item eight. Do we have a motion, please?
Madam, I move we approve a proclamation declaring March twenty twenty-four to be American Red Cross Month.
I'll second it.
Okay, um I did ask that um that this proclamation be read by one of our staff. Um Melissa Wright was uh has been, I shouldn't say was, has and probably will continue to be active um among the staff, trying to get them to donate blood. And um and so I wanted to give her the the credit for making sure that uh that people understand that here at the county, we do support the blood drives, and Melissa is the one who's in charge of that. So if you would read the proclamation, Melissa?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um the proclamation reads, Red Cross Month. During American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Cochise County and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. This generous spirit in wa- is woven into the fabric of our community and advances of advances the humanitarian legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who no- who nobly dedicated herself to alleviating suffering. Today, kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they step up through the Arizona-New Mexico region to provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. Through their voluntary and selfless contributions, they make a life-saving difference in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans and caregivers through their unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crisis. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who led with their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join in this commitment to strengthen our community.
Now, therefore, I am English Chairman of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors by virtue of the authority vested by the laws of Cochise County and Arizona do hereby proclaim March twenty four, twenty twenty-four as Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens of Cochise County to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. In witness whereof, I have here here and to set my hand this first day of March in the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-four, and of Cochise County, approved and adopted this twenty-seventh day of February, twenty twenty-four. If there are no comments, we do have a motion and a second.
I'd just like to say two quick things. So one of the things I see in my head when I see red crosses, we were traveling to my daughter's years ago, and there was a horrible tornado that just wiped out a whole town. And I'll never forget seeing that hospital that they set up like immediately, a kind of a tent conglomeration with the big red cross on it. And um we don't see those type of disasters in our communities.
Fortunately.
But blood drives are common, and thank you for your work with blood drives. And um after this, I my my daughter who accompanied me today, who I didn't need to call out, but she's going to donate blood. I can't do that anymore, but she can. And I think it's important that we are all aware of donating blood and how important that is. Um so, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further comments, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. And thank you, Melissa. Uh number nine, need a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Community Enhancement Fund expenditures for District Two public transit support in Douglas in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Uh we have a motion in a second, and uh this is my district. Uh it is something that I've asked for continually for several years. Um there are people that really need public transportation, but unfortunately, there's never going to be enough of them in the rural area that pays for it. So there has to be a subsidy. And um and I've been willing to subsidize. I know that uh Ms. Judd has been willing to subsidize in Wilcox area for the starting of of one of these. So I I think that this is important, and I hope that you'll support me in supporting Douglas in their transit. So we have um a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Uh the next one, uh could we have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move we approve the over-the-counter sales
No, number ten.
Oops, I'm sorry. I move we approve Community Enhancement Fund expenditures for District Two water and sewer line extension at Bisbee Douglas International Airport in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Again, I will explain this. Uh the Bisbee Douglas International Airport belongs to uh the Cochise County Board, and there is a lot on the um BDI that does not have access at this time to water and sewer, so therefore it can't be commercialized. And so um Douglas, who does our water system and our sewer system at the airport, uh I'm asking to fund them in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars in order to hook up uh one of the um, I I call it a pod or a a place at the airport so that it can be used for commercial. So um any questions, comments?
Is it a match by the county, or is it sole, that that's the sole amount of money?
No, that's the sole amount of money. Because I I asked Douglas what it would cost in order for them to do this, since they do take care of the water and sewer at the airport, and that was the number that was given to me.
Thank you, Madam.
Any other question, comment?
No.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Uh now we go to number eleven.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the over-the-counter tax of sale of tax-deed property that's set for in the attached exhibit A plus related administrative fees.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. Lonsky?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this item is asking for your approval of a bid for a parcel that was unsold after last year's tax-deed land sale. This parcel is one of five parcels that remained. A bid of two thousand dollars along with a twenty-five dollar administrat- administrative fee was received for the parcel listed in Exhibit A. Uh board staff is recommending approval.
Okay, any questions coming? I think it's good we found someone. Our goal is to put these properties back on the tax rule. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Uh number twelve, we need a a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move we approve contract twenty-four dash fourteen dash D E V dash zero one Mascot Homes in construction for the remodel of the Cochise County Wilcox Airport Terminal in the amount of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Coxworth, would you elaborate a little?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Development Services did work with the procurement department to uh for this request through the FOMO bidding process um to remodel the terminal building at the Cochise County Airport in Wilcox. Um five proposals were submitted, and all proposals were evaluated with Mascot Homes and Construction selected as the winning bidder. The Board of Supervisors approved the budget of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project. The lowest bid is a little above that, but I was able to find the additional funds in the airport budget. The terminal building was constructed in the fifties, I believe, and to my knowledge, has not been remodeled since then, and it looks like it. The remodel will create a more functional space with a professional look and also include nude roof, entry enhancements, window replacements, and interior improvements, two doors, ceilings, countertops, and finishes. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments?
Nope. I just want to say thank you. That air, that airport's close and dear to me, being my own hometown airport, and I've seen the type of clientele that come in and out of there, and and often been ashamed of of what we're we're doing. We have some large corporation, corporate-type travel. We have Indy Motorsports, which is a recreational, high-end travel, and it it needs to look good. It needs to, it needs to say something, and it will say something about the county and the community, if it's nice.
Yes.
Mr. Coxworth, thank you for your conscientious department leadership.
Uh thank you, sir.
I I think it's important that we keep all of our facilities, and since this is our facility, um up to the standard that people would expect from us. So if there's no further comments, I'll call for the vote. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you, Mr. Coxworth. Uh number thirteen, need a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Cochise County participation in the twenty twenty-three Southern Arizona Multi-Jurisdictional Training and Exercise Initiative per the Memorandum of Understanding between the Arizona Department of Homeland Security, the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, and Pima County.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh some explanation, Mr. Duchon?
Good morning, Chair members of the board. Thank you. Uh we're requesting approval to participate in the twenty twenty-three Southern Arizona Multi-Jurisdictional Training and Exercise Initiative. It's a regional partnership with Pima, Yuma, Santa Cruz, and Cochise County. The initiative and grant is managed by the Arizona Department of Emergency Military Affairs in conjunction with State Department of Homeland Security. It is funded by the State Homeland Security Grant Program. The southern region was awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that, twenty-four thousand is for Cochise County. Uh some training examples that we'll be able to offer, Incident Command System, All-Hazard Incident Management Team, I C S Section Chief, Technical Rescue, SWAT, and P I O classes. Specifically for twenty twenty-four, uh my office plans on hosting the intermediate Incident Command Systems, Advanced Incident Command Systems, Emergency Operations Center functions. Uh we're going to send two service-to-firefighters to tactical E M T course. Uh we're going to try to send one C C S O SWAT member for a specific SWAT class. Uh in August, we're looking to host an active shooter class for our law enforcement officers. In August, we're looking to host an active shooter class for our law enforcement officers. And in the fall, up in Benson or Wilcox, a railroad boxcar emergency course.
Sounds like a lot of training. Any questions before I go to the public? There's some people who wish to make comments.
Mr. Duchon, does a tactical E M T class include firearms training?
Uh, no, it's, it's for firefighters, paramedics, how to enter that, what we call the warm zone. So maybe if a facility is yet to be fully cleared and safe by the SWAT team, those E M Ts and paramedics can still enter and provide patient care. But no, the firefighters are not using.
Thank you.
Okay, I have some people who wish to speak on this. We have Dan G. Legg in person.
Morning, I'm Dan Legg from Wedstone. And we're all aware, in the fall of twenty-twenty, the influx of illegals started increasing dramatically at the border due to the expected immigration policy changes by the Biden, Biden administration. And within hours of him taking office, he reversed most of Trump's policies. And our governor was in support of that and turned a manageable situation into a crisis. America's quickly collapsing around us here. In November of twenty-three, the House Committee on Homeland Security released a report that detailed the financial cost of the invasions into our country. And the cost of the healthcare system, law enforcement, education, housing, to handle all the illegals that are crossing the border is escalated into the billions in our, our republic here. Money is being spent to take care of the illegals while we neglect our own citizens, veterans, and mentally ill, and many of them have become homeless because of all of this. Home, uh, the report stated that the invasion over our southern border has brought millions of illegals from a hundred and seventy countries into the U.S. And the notion that all of these invaders are seeking asylum from tyrannical regimes is a lie. Most of them have been encouraged to come here and instructed on what to say when they reach the border to gain entry. Tens and thousands of young men have come across the southern border. Many appear to be military-trained. Their motives for being here are very questionable. Many come with criminal gang-related backgrounds. Our violent crimes in the county and in our nation are increasing. Sex trafficking, property crimes are on the upswing. According to the report, in March of twenty-one, Cochise County Sheriff Department received more than twelve million dollars from the state coffers. I want to know how many other finances have, have they received? And what did it do to benefit the people of Cochise County? Are we any safer than before? And here we are, years later, three years later, with item shirt thirteen showing up, and more money to be used on exercises and training. And I'm not against being prepared for anything, but I would like to see some results that the county people that are paying for this are getting some benefits out of this. I don't see many tangible results, and common sense tells me that it's an invasion, and that the best thing that we could do would be to shut down the border. But with the lack of common sense in doing that, I feel that our backs are against the wall, and out of desperation, we need to go ahead and vote yes on this. May God bless America again.
Thank you. We have another person who wishes to speak on this. It's on Teams, Randall Limbaugh. Oh, looks like he's here in person.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, Randall Limbaugh, Sierra Vista. My questions and concerns were answered, so thank you.
Okay, the next person who wished to speak on this is Paul Varble in person?
Agenda thirteen and the Invasion Clause of the Constitution. So Pima, Tucson, and Douglas are no longer going to be able to get any money out of this deal with the invaders. Guess where all those invaders are going to go to? Or let me be more clear, where they are coming to? You got it right here. So we have to prevent, prevent, prevent. Every state is a border state. We have an invasion on the border. Cochise County is being invaded. It's a border state county, and all the counties will be border state counties and border state cities. So it's up to our Cochise County Board of Supervisors to demand our sheriff's office to prevent the invasion by enlisting the aid of we, the people, volunteers, and militia to patrol the length of the border, preventing crossings and facilitating deportations when they're caught. Arizona revised statute eleven four four one describes the powers and duties of the sheriff to include as many inhabitants of the county as the sheriff deems necessary, and may request the aid of volunteer posse and reserve organizations located in the county. Posse Communitist Act affords a county sheriff the autonomy to enroll the aid of the citizens to secure law and order. Processing is aiding and abetting. It's cheaper to deport than support. Have a good day.
Okay, um, we're asked to approve the understanding, memorandum of understanding for mostly what we're talking about here is educational, even though it's in several different areas. So does anyone have any questions or comments before I call for the vote, since we have a motion and a second?
I don't have any. It was, you did a good job explaining that there are things that we need in our communities, and it's going to happen. Thank you. To you.
No comments?
No, I asked him about firearms training, and he answered that. That's all I had.
All right, just wanted to make sure. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, none? So it is approved unanimously. Item number fourteen, we have a motion, please, on the floor?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Intergovernmental Agreement I G A C T R zero six seven five seven nine, Cochise County Medical Reserve Corps, State, Territory, and Tribal Nations, Representative Organizations for Next Generation, M R C, S T T R O N G, between Arizona Department of Health Services and Cochise County Health and Social Services, in the amount of one hundred, one hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred, to include one additional full-time equivalent staff member effective June first, twenty twenty-three through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. So Ms. Mitchell, could you give us some explanation before I call the public who wishes to speak on this?
Yeah. Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisor Crosby.
Could you move the microphone just a little closer to your mouth?
Thank you for having me here. The M R C Strong Grant is the amount one hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars is coming to the Cochise County M R C group that we currently have. This funding will actually enhance our program because it's not active at this time. We do not have active volunteers. We are going to need to build policies and procedures and such forth to build that. Now, I want to kind of go into the M R C itself and the individuals that will be in the M R C. I know that it says Medical Reserve Corps, but that does not, that it, it doesn't encompass just medical. You can have anyone from heavy equipment operators, veterinarians, clerks. This is to, this is volunteers in our community that will help keep any of our disasters and emergencies local so that we don't have to ask for further help or a state response or a federal response to come in. So we're trying to keep it here local by using an M R C.
Okay, any questions for Kimberly before I call the public?
Proceed.
Okay, I have, again, some people who wish to speak on this. The first one is Randall Limbaugh.
Randall Limbaugh, Sierra Vista. I'm assuming by the title, this is benefiting tribal nations. I'm not quite clear on that. But I do have concerns with the language contained within the I G A. It's very similar and cryptic in nature, as are the coronavirus and immunization I G As approved in recent years, using language such as strengthen healthcare workforce, targeted area, enhance data integration, outreach, underserved areas, tracking, mapping, and data collection systems, sustainability plan, emergency preparedness, and of course, climate change. In fact, this I G A states that a pandemic still exists when neither the CDC nor the N I H support this premise. I did visit the Medical Reserve Corps website, and there was a video that proudly displayed the success of their COVID-nineteen vaccination clinics. And I wonder if the good-hearted M R C Strong volunteers will inform the soon, soon-to-be victims, whether they're tribal or any other minority group, on the realities of sudden-death syndrome, infertility, vaccine-acquired immune deficiency syndrome, or myocarditis, all associated with the COVID injection. Will these volunteers explain the truth that for the last three years, medical professionals mistreated and misled their patients, engaging in the chronic disabilities and deaths of tens of millions of people worldwide? The answer is no, because our good-hearted and good-natured local health professionals overwhelmingly place money above patient care. Thank you.
The next person is Nancy Olmstead. I believe she's on Teams.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Olmstead. I live in Wedstone, and I thank you for this opportunity. My thoughts and prayers to the Judd family. The other day, I was asked my thoughts about I G As. In retrospect, I came to the conclusion that an I G A's impact is proportional to the size of the granting agency offering, offering their, air quotes, free monies. For instance, a local-to-local I G A can perhaps be quite beneficial, local benefiting local. However, when an I G A requires a local government to obfuscate its control to state and federal agencies, even if it seems reasonable or even essential, the impact will constrict effective local governance, especially when the receiving body is substantially smaller than the grantor. Father of the Constitution, James Madison, devoted five Federalist Papers, forty-seven through fifty-one, to explain the intricate system of checks and balances. George Washington, in his farewell address, warned of the necessity of reciprocal checks of political power. The stated purpose of this I G A is to combat COVID. However, the federal government declared May eleventh, twenty twenty-three, the end of a public health emergency. Even W H O decided just last Friday, COVID-nineteen was no longer an emergency, but never let a crisis go to waste, right? A free society requires self-control. Every I G A, especially federal, should be evaluated on how it restricts our rights. A free, a free society requires self-control. That's, I'm sorry, for our country's future, rather than simply rubber-stamping yet another federal handout. This legislative body must let this crisis go. A report recently presented by Competitive Institute Enterprise, who is ranked fifty-ninth of think tanks in the U.S., proposed the Abuse of Crisis Prevention Act to reaffirm boundaries necessary for the survival of limited government. To quote S I E, excessive government spending magnified during a crisis creates not just economic distortions, but also burdensome regulatory controls. What is most urgently needed is for policymakers to adopt policies that do not expand the size of government, rather increase personal wealth and self-reliance of households and businesses, unquote. Fewer federal I G As will improve local government self-reliance. Since the pandemic is no longer a factor, change course today to preserve our constitutional republican government. Just say no. Stop your addiction to the federal government's abuse of crisis. Vote no on this item. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
I do. Um, I had looked up what, I also went to a website and looked up what, what this was, the M R C. And I mean, this, there's an exhaustive list, but it, it does include veterinary care, support services to disaster call centers, family assistance centers, and reception evacuation centers, like if there was a fire or something like, and when we had one in Sierra Vista, emergency operations center, and communication support, patient movement support, search and rescue operations, disaster cleanup and recovery support, first aid and medical support during large public gatherings. I mean, I could go on and on, but there's a lot of things that you would do. And I, and I, when you said that, well, it's backhoe operators, and I, I totally got it because I had read that, and then I was getting a little confused by the comments. I, I think that an organized battalion of people that have a lot of different skills are going to make a big difference in the case, and I'm sure Mr. Duchon would agree in his department, but I see that as valuable, and I'm glad that we're going to start it up, so. Thank you.
Comments?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I asked Ms. Mitchell a couple of questions on email this last week. I read the whole thing. I'm glad to report that I didn't see vaccinations or quarantines. So I, one thing that I did see repeatedly is a reference to underserved communities. So I, I wonder, I'll just answer my own question. Why are there underserved communities? It's because they're lower income, and I am in favor of higher income, not redistribution of wealth. And this is apparently a growth of government that is related to or socialized medicine and, and growth of government, so I will be voting against this.
I, I might also mention, if I could, to that comment, underserved communities are also by geographic location. That's how, that's how it is in my district. It does not necessarily, that they don't have industry or, or money. They're just way far away from places, and it's more expensive to get them services. So I think a little bit of a boost, and talented people in those districts and those communities will be helpful, too. Hopefully, they'll join in. So thank you.
I, I think it's a, a step forward. As Ms. Judd mentioned, when we had the big fire, there was a lot of scrambling that had to take place. When we had the floods in Elfrida last year that Kimberly worked so hard on, we had to scramble because we didn't have a group of volunteers that we could call on or that she could call on immediately, and so she had to scramble to put them together. So when I read this, what I see is it, the money will allow the hiring of an individual who can put a list together of volunteers in all the different areas that might be necessary, whatever the crisis is. So I think it's a great step forward because we've always had emergency services here at the county, you know, medical and, and others. So I'm, I'm certainly going to be voting for this. I think it's a step forward. And for the people who mentioned outsiders, this is to try and get us to be helping ourselves. So the person's going to be looking for local volunteers that we could call on if necessary. So that's all I have to say. Any other comments before I call for the vote?
No.
Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, one against, two for, it passes. So we move on to item number fifteen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS Hopkwa Grant Agreement, A Z H twenty-three zero zero fourteen with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for Program Administration by the Housing Authority of Cochise County in the amount of six hundred and forty-three thousand thirteen dollars effective February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four to February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-seven.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Baca?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. So every three years, I come to you and request your approval for our renewal application for housing opportunity for persons with AIDS. This year, we received an increase of approximately, of over twenty-six thousand dollars for the next three years. We have been administering this program since two thousand and four, and it covers not only monthly rental assistance, called tenant-based rental assistance, but And um, it covers not only uh monthly rental assistance uh called tenant-based rental assistance, but it also covers uh STRMU, which is uh short-term rent utility and um and uh mortgages, I I'm sorry, assistance. And so I'm here today to request um the approval of the renewal from today through February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-seven.
I think for the benefit of the public who don't understand the numbers of people that are being served by this, if you could put those numbers into the record for us, Anina?
Absolutely. So our our benchmark, each each one is a benchmark. Um, and our benchmark for the tenant-based uh rental assistance is between twenty-two and twenty-five each month. So those are our families who are who receive monthly assistance from us. The uh STRMU for short-term um rent utilities and mortgage assistance can be anywhere between forty and sixty families a year that that we assist with that. We also provide um housing outreach, and um we collaborate with Southern Arizona AIDS Foundation. They determine the uh the the status, the medical status of the participants, their their patients. And um then they refer the patients to us for the housing component. Many times, the um the patients are in dire need of these services and are um are in danger of becoming homeless. And this is the housing component that it just kind of fills the gap of their services and and their needs.
Any other questions or comments?
Ms. Baca, in previous grants, you you've mentioned uh veterans integration, and there was a uh an acronym that went along with with that particular thing. Does this grant have anything to do with uh veterans' integration into this program?
Southern Arizona AIDS Foundation determines the eligibility um solely on their end, and it's a medical determination. So um whether they're a veteran or not isn't significant in this program. The the program that I believe you're referring to is um is called HUDVASH, and it's specifically for veterans.
Yep, that's the one else. I couldn't remember. Thank you.
And also, you're welcome. And also, we have a veterans' preference for our section age waiting list.
Okay, and that has to do with uh housing, but not this particular?
Correct.
Different pocket of money. Any other questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Anina.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions or comments, and I'll, we have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is uh state and federal legislation, and all of you are being apprised of uh the bills that are being presented. Any of them that you want to discuss or comment?
I I'd like to mention the the bills that are um looking to control the the water, um, help us to control, manage our own water. There's a couple of them. Um, I'm going to just mention to the board that I would highly prefer the one that the farmers and the ranchers are in approval with. Um, there's a couple of different ones, and it it just feels like we need to support that industry because they're the ones that are the most likely going to lose in the end, even in local management.
And do you have a number for that bill for the record?
I wish I did. Sorry. I I just, I did last week before everything went apart. But anyway, when you look at them, there's two um different bills. Um, the one is not presented by Representative Griffin, but she actually supports it. So it seems like the easy road, but it seems like it's not getting the public, the public attention behind it. Um, I can't figure it out. They both seem fairly equal to me. But I'd really like to see the farmers and ranchers have have their hand in in that discussion. So if we can, you know, kind of watch that.
I I think they do feel left out, and they are the biggest users, so.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, no other comments, then I'm going to move to uh Mr. Karwachka. You have a uh report on county matters.
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Supervisor Judd, Supervisor Crosby. Uh, first, I wanted to inform the public. Uh, we've stated it before. The speaker request forms of the deadline to turn those in, we're moving it up an hour, so nine AM, the day of the meetings. Uh, so you have until nine AM. You can submit those online as well. Uh, the other note is that uh the Presidential Preference Election is up on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, you have to be registered as a Republican or Democrat to vote in that Presidential Preference Election. Uh, the last day to request a ballot by mail is March eighth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, and election day, once again, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. That's all I have.
Okay, current events, District one.
I'll pass.
District two, I'm going to pass. District three?
I am not going to pass. I would like to tell everyone, thank you for their kindness and their gifts and their their indulgence and their love that they've given me prayers, especially during the last couple of weeks. So thank you very much.
Okay, um, I need to report to you that our next meeting will be today at one o'clock in the Board of Supervisors hearing room for a work session regarding Facilities Department, and it's an informational update. Having said that, you all have a nice day. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.